Got me. There you go. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors meeting December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P. M. in the Russell County Board of Supervisors room. I'd like to first start with the call of order and roll call. Andrew Hensley.
Here.
Drew Ann Wallace.
Here.
Terida.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Rebecca Di.
Here.
Nate Kaiser.
Here.
And Steve Breeden.
Here.
Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, first item is the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. After the invocation, please just remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, and Lord, we ask that you forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Lord, as the Christmas season comes upon us, we just ask that you help remind us what the season is really about, and that is you, Father. So be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda, and I have one item that we need to add on to it. Mr. Lester has asked us to put Pure Salmon Road Agreement under County Administrator Reports and Requests as item number fifteen. If you'd add that to your agenda. Are there any other changes or modifications needed to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve with those changes.
Second?
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, sing if I've seen an eye.
Aye.
I'll put a like sign. There aren't any. Okay, next, our presentations. First up on our presentations, we have the Department of Social Services with our director, Elizabeth Vance.
I would like to thank Mr. Lester and the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to present tonight on behalf of the Russell County Department of Social Services. I would also like to thank each and every one of you guys for the one thousand dollar grant during Halloween. The department served five hundred and twenty-two citizens in Russell County with food city vouchers in the amount of two hundred dollars. This was for the people who did not receive SNAP benefits. For the people that did receive the SNAP benefits, we did over six hundred replacements to the citizens. This was from September the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four through November the eighth, and it was based by allotment. As of December two thousand and twenty-four, there are eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine citizens in Russell County receiving SNAP benefits. As of January the first, two thousand and twenty-four through eleven thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, there are twenty-three fraud cases that have been investigated, thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars claims, and fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine stopped in SNAP benefits. Haley McCammon is the new fraud investigator, and she has done an exceptional job. Energy assistance from ten one twenty-three to eight twenty-two twenty-four, we have served one thousand nine hundred and ninety citizens in fuel assistance, five hundred and thirty in crosses, and one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine in cooling, which is a total of one million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixty-one total payout for Russell County citizens for electric. Since ten one twenty-four, we have served one thousand eight hundred and four citizens in fuel, fifty-two crosses, and one hundred and fourteen in pit, and that's a new program, and it assists clients that have A. P. to reduce their bills monthly. In child protective services, from seven one twenty-three to six thirty twenty-four, we had received seven hundred and thirty-one referrals, and we accepted three hundred and ninety-three. There was forty-five findings made of abuse and neglect, and ninety-one of them were unfounded. We have five CPS workers and one vacant one right now. In adult protective services, we have twenty clients in assisted living facilities, forty-nine guardians in Russell County, five Russell County the department has guardianship of, and four are receiving companions, and as of today, we have twenty-five active APS cases. In foster care, we currently have ninety children in foster care. That is a major increase. We have one in regular foster care, we have seven in relative kinship placements, fifty-five in therapeutic foster homes, five in residential, one in sponsored residential, and this is a new facility. It's like special care for kids. One independent living, seven fostering futures, thirteen adoptive placements, five trial placements, and three group homes. We currently have eight non-relative foster homes approved, we have seven non-relative foster homes in the process of approval, and seven relative foster homes. And we have forty-five employees at Russell County DSS and three vacant positions currently. That's all I have this time.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody have questions for Elizabeth?
I just want to say what a great job you've done, Leah. You know, you took on a bear this year, and we really, really appreciate it. You've done, you've done great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate it. Okay, next, we have Commonwealth Energy Partners. Do you guys want to step up to the podium?
Good evening, members of the board. Can you all hear me all right? Good evening, members of the board and Russell County community. My name is Thomas Williams with CEP Solar. I'm joined here this evening by CEP's co-founder, Richard Wright, our attorney, John Povac, and Mr. Andrew Gilmer, Ms. B. Stewart, and Mr. Sandy Stewart, as our landowner partners representing Stewart Land and Cattle Company of Virginia. I see lots of familiar faces up here from last week's Solar One-O-One Open House at the REC Center, and I really appreciate y'all making the time to attend there. And educate yourselves, you know, on solar and interact with folks kind of on our side of the industry. So I'd like to get started here with just a little bit of a brief background on CEP Solar and who we are. We're a Virginia-based solar company focused exclusively on developing solar and battery storage projects across the Commonwealth, and with the ultimate goal of of empowering Virginia's clean economy. And the way that we want to go about doing that is being a best-in-class development partner, and the way that we go about doing that is fostering long-term relationships in the communities that we partner with and being good stewards of those relationships and the projects that we're proposing to develop. And the way that we go about being, you know, that best-in-class development partner is fully embodying the values of integrity, humility, and flexibility. So moving on with a bit more background information on who we are as a company, just putting some names to faces here. I don't feel the need to go through, you know, everyone's personal background here, but the main takeaway from this slide being that our senior management team here has five decades plus of collective experience across the renewable energy industry from every phase of the project lifecycle, from land origination to permitting to interconnection to construction and financing of these projects. Skipping ahead, just a little bit more information on the background of the company and who we are. We got a really great supporting cast here, you know, humble brag, myself included up there.
That'll break my nodding.
We do have a, do have a great, great supporting cast, and just want to mention that, you know, most of us are native Virginians and really passionate about, you know, seeing this, you know, clean energy transition through in the right way. Well, that's enough information on who we are as a company, so I just want to shift gears briefly to, to some, some maps that we also shared at our community meeting back in August. The first map here is just a locational reference map of the county showing the project site and the proposed, not the proposed, but the current study boundary. As you can see, it's located kind of in that Clifton area towards the eastern end of the county. But really just a locational reference there for you all. And going to the next slide here have a bit more in-depth and closer aerial of the site. And the purpose of this map here is to show the existing buildings near the property, which, as you would imagine, most are residences, and most residents are well over four hundred feet from the study area boundary, with the exception of those properties to the south along Acre Lane. But also want to take the opportunity here to mention, you know, why this property ultimately was chosen, and that's due to its proximity to existing infrastructure and the distribution lines that run up and down Old Highway Nineteen there and Clifton Farm Road. And also given that in our conversations with, with Stewart Land and Cattle, this property ultimately is going to have the, you know, the smallest impact on their cattle operation, so that's, that's ultimately why this, this area was chosen. And shifting gears to some of the more, some of the permitting work involved with these solar farms. There are three main state agencies responsible for overseeing and regulating, you know, the development and construction of these solar facilities, with the ultimate goal of minimizing the environmental, cultural, and historical impact on not only the property on which the projects are cited, but any neighboring properties and the community as a whole. And I think the key piece here to emphasize is that none of these state permitting processes can be initiated until we have regulatory approval from the local governing body, in this case, you all, the Board of Supervisors. And also just want to emphasize here that they're, these are very complex and thorough review processes that these agencies are going through, and that they will, you know, in combination with several other factors, you know, including your decision as a board and APCO's kind of current conditions as a utility. But other than those, these three state agencies are going to be the main indicators of whether or not this project is viable. So to kind of piggyback off some of the permitting work there, I'd like to touch on some of the community engagement and outreach that we've done to date. Back in July, CEP sent out mailers including some of the high-level project information that I've handed out before you, including an invitation to our community meeting that we held back in August. And subsequently, we did hold that community meeting in August at the Belfast-Roseville Volunteer Firehouse. That meeting was well attended by several adjoining property owners, led to some very positive discussions, and generally, I think folks are really just curious about, you know, what's going on in their neck of the woods, and we were more than happy to answer questions and provide clarity where possible. And since then, I've, I've stayed in touch with several of those landowners and answered questions as, as they've, you know, voiced them to me. And kind of one of the last things I want to touch on here is that Solar One-O-One Open House from last week. Thank you again to all of y'all who were able to attend that, but that, again, was another well-attended community meeting, just trying to educate folks on the, on the benefits of solar energy. And following that meeting, I actually stuck around that night, and December fourth, went out in the morning and knocked on some of those doors along Acre Lane, which is going to be closest to the project study boundary. Not necess, you know, the project's obviously not going to be built right up to the property line. That's one of the conditions that we're hoping to work on with you all, but did go and knock on some of those doors and was able to speak with folks, and they were appreciative of me stopping by, invited me in out of the, out of the cold snowy weather, and they were, they were very nice, and just wanted to share my contact information with them and some of that high-level project information. But that's, that kind of summarizes our community outreach to date. And lastly, just want to emphasize, you know, ultimately the reason that, that we're here presenting for you all, which is to, you know, seek some direction for the county to approve county staff and attorney work on the proposed siding agreement that we shared back in July. You know, and if, and if we're able to move forward there, the next steps would be as follows here, which would be negotiating and finalizing that siding agreement, identifying a date on the schedule that works both for the board, including CEP, including our landowner partners, and, and any, you know, legal representation that works to, to hold a public hearing. And then subsequently, we'd provide public notice for that public hearing fourteen days ahead of time, as mandated by Virginia State Code, and then ultimately, we would hold, or the board would hold that public hearing and have a vote on that siding agreement. And, you know, kind of lastly, our, our goal, you know, CEP is willing and able to meet as frequently as county staff desires to negotiate those terms and conditions to that siding agreement, and our goal is to move as expeditiously as possible towards a public hearing in the month of January. I know the holidays are soon to be upon us, so that might seem like a bit of, you know, a stretch, but I think it's best to, you know, shoot for a timeline and give us a backstop to, to work towards. Another thing I just want to mention as, as part of the siding agreement, we understand that, you know, legal proceedings in the county place, you know, a financial burden on, on the county to have documents reviewed. And I just want to emphasize that as part of the siding agreement, we're proposing, CEP is proposing, to cover a certain amount of those legal costs to minimize any financial burden that we're placing on the county to review, you know, our siding agreement and any subsequent permits. So I just want to thank you again for all your time and consideration here, and I'll open the floor for any questions I might have.
Board members have questions? How many acres are you looking at there that's actually viable for placing these panels on?
Yes, sir. That's a, that's a good question. The study area itself, if we flip back to that existing buildings map, is four hundred and sixty-six acres, give or take, and based on desktop review of the site, taking into account topography, wetlands, you know, sinkholes, you know, the karst, karst nature of the topography around here is very, very fascinating. But we've identified roughly a hundred and eighty acres that we think are buildable. Ultimately, that'll be informed by the state review processes with D. Q., D. W. R., and D. H. R., and will also require, you know, onsite studies with Geotech and wetlands delineations to, to better inform that. But I'll also, you know, message that we're currently studying this project for up to twelve megawatts of solar energy generation, which, you know, based on some industry standards is, give or take, ten acres per megawatt. So we wouldn't be, if we're able to capture the top end of that twelve megawatts that we're proposing with, with APCO, then, you know, we'd be looking at, give or take, a hundred and twenty acres, so we're not proposing to, to use the full extent of the, of the buildaway acreage on the property.
So how's your access going to work into this property? Now, I'm familiar enough to know that it was logged recently, so I assume you're going to go that direction. And traction trailers has come in and out there, so I assume that will work to get you in and out.
Yes, sir. That's the, that's the immediate thought, is use the current access, and that's certainly the plan. The only thing that could, you know, be subject to change there is with the wetlands delineations, if there, you know, if there are any, you know, kind of, you know, curative factors, like if we have to put in, you know, a culvert or, or something to divert any floodwaters that are currently, because there is a wetland feature that's very close to that access road off, off Clifton Farm Road. But yes, sir, the current, current plan is to use the existing access that's used.
Your current traction trailer's coming in out of Jim Frank subdivision, which is down at Belfast School, and this access is up the, up the road quite a few miles, Andrew.
It's at the entrance of Clifton. It's not going to be there through the September.
Okay, that's.
It's separate. It's totally separate.
The proposed entrance is up in the northeast corner here. You know where you right turn, when you turn right into Clifton, it's just a gate right there.
It goes across a creek and up in the lane.
I, I know where you're talking about now. I was thinking that it was the King property that y'all. Okay, I know exactly where you're at now.
Sorry about that. I just, I assumed that that current access there, kind of in the northeastern corner, is where they, you know, use for, for timber access, but, you know, you know what assuming does, so, sorry about that.
Yeah, technically, it's just west of, of this intersection, and that's also where the utility connection would, would be placed on property.
So you need, you need that agreement. Where, where do we stand, Mr. Lester, on that agreement? And Mr. Wampler, I mean, is that something we've been working on or looking at, or?
Yeah. Mr. Chair and to Mr. Hensley, so we've received the notice of intent to proceed in July along with the proposed siding agreement. I believe that CEP circulated a revised siding agreement. If this board wants to take action, you need to at least authorize me to negotiate that agreement on your behalf. So what hasn't happened since July is any majority vote of the board, one way or the other, on this project, and so for me to proceed, I need some authority to negotiate that from this board. Just to put it another way, if I were to start executing agreements or negotiating agreements without your authority, you'd be very upset with me, and so, you know, for me to go forward, I need some sort of majority vote on this. As Thomas explained, the process would be that we negotiate a final siding agreement with CEP as a solar developer. That agreement will then be put out for public hearing and back before the board for a final vote for approval. Thomas, feel free to correct me if you think I'm inaccurate on that, but that would be the, the steps, next steps in this. And then we also have the solar ordinance, which we can discuss in my attorney report, but as far as the action item on this, and we're in guest presentations right now, but when the board, you know, deems it proper to take up action items, I would need something to go forward with on this project. Vote to the board.
One other additional comment, just related to the siding agreement as part of this presentation, as we've looked at it, and we look forward again to talking more about that and through the terms and conditions of it. From our perspective, what's in the siding agreement, it covers many of the same topics that a normal ordinance would cover, where there is zoning in place and where there are ordinances, so it's very comprehensive and thorough and addresses many of the questions that come up and the conditions that are typically addressed in ordinances. So just wanted to mention that, too. Thank you for your time.
When I look at your next steps, I see negotiate final siding agreement, identify date, the board schedule public hearing, and what is your preferable schedule on this? I think we could probably authorize our attorney tonight to go ahead and initiate that negotiations. Is there, you want to try to have, you know, your public hearing by January or February?
That would be having.
I mean, you tell us what you're.
Yes, sir. Our goal would be to have the public hearing and board vote at the next board meeting in January.
Can we do that, Monza?
I don't think, has the schedule been released for January yet?
No, it has not.
We just, one thing, we would like to do it as soon as we can, but also want to make sure we're following the procedure to provide proper, proper public notice ahead of that, so I think he is making sure we know when the January board meeting might occur and backing up from there to determine if we can get the notice out and, and have time between tonight and then to effectively negotiate the agreement so that it can be publicized properly ahead of time, so, you know, it might be a, a quick up and down, but that, that is our preference, and if, you know, there are always subsequent meetings, we run into some kind of timeline hiccup, so.
Well, both myself and, and Chair did discuss the next, the January board meeting. It's into, we're going to have to change the date on it because of the holidays.
I'd like to, yeah, it's, it's the weekend, our board meeting would be the weekend following New Year's Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, which I would typically be in Charlotte, North Carolina with my grandchildren, but if we, I'd like to move that to the sixth on a Monday night if the board would be agreeable. You might get a great present, David. You never know. Remember, one board meeting we had on your anniversary, so it couldn't be any worse than that. And hang on just a second. So we can have this public hearing on, at our regular scheduled meeting, and because of the holiday, let's, we're going to have it on the sixth.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair to the members, we'll need a final siding agreement that is proposed to the board. Once that happens and there is tentative agreement between the parties on the siding agreement, we'll publish that final proposed siding agreement for the public to then weigh in on. So I think for the purposes of timing, it's December ninth today. If I take the next twenty days to negotiate the agreement, it would be ready early January to then disseminate to the public, so we need fourteen days of circulation and a newspaper of general circulation, so that'll be the Lebanon News. After that period, probably February before a final vote would come forward on the, the siding agreement is what, is the timeline I would recommend to the board.
Unless the board wanted to call a special call meeting.
And in that instance, it would be upon the call of the board after the public hearing deadline is passed?
What, what is the earliest date that you can have it, Will? Are you talking mid-January sometime?
I'd say by the end of the month, end of December, beginning of January. By your next meeting, you'll have a proposed siding agreement if it is, if you vote to authorize me to do that.
That's at the end of January. Yeah, that's at the, yeah.
That'd be the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. I mean, you know, we can have our meeting and adjourn to reconvene for that particular purpose on a later date. It'd be the quickest way to take care of it if, if we can nail down a date tonight.
I'll make a motion that we allow our attorney to negotiate this agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor, sing if I've seen an eye. I'll put a like sign.
I'm going to abstain. I was at the meeting at the Belfast Fire Hall, and there was, counting myself, there were six. There was a Ms. Wolf, the Ashby family, and another husband and wife. The folks that are all in that subdivision, not one family was there, so we need to make sure we get it published for them. There was only five public people, five people at that meeting that lived in that district.
Well, I think there'll be another meeting. Yeah. Okay, I have the six eyes and one abstention. Okay, so the motion passes. Let's go ahead and see if we can set this meeting for, does the twenty-first of January work with everybody? That's the day after MLK Junior Day. Will that fit your schedule, Will?
Just the, the determining factor is the siding agreement being published for a two-week period prior to adoption, and so that, the public hearings, if we get the agreement done, let's say by January one, you need two weeks to have the public hearing, and then after that public hearing, the board would be in position to take a final vote on the siding agreement. So end of January should work. Make no guarantees, but I think that that would, would, would fit our timeline, something between the twenty-first and thirty-first.
I got a recommendation. Why don't we let our attorney start on the agreement? And then just, well, what I'm saying is, let us know what the timeline is, and then we can call a meeting. If he's able to get to the, to the end of the road on the agreement, or if not, and if you run into some obstacles, it might put us into February.
I appreciate the flexibility. I think that'll work.
We, we don't really need, I mean, we can, at the meeting on the sixth, if we, if we do that, then we can adjourn to reconvene at whatever date works out, you know, so. Can we, can we set a date on the sixth if, if everything is, is agreeable, and it go in the paper in the correct amount of time?
That would, that would fit your schedule of the twenty-first to the day. That would, that would fit your schedule of the twenty-first, uh, to the day.
To the twenty-first to the day.
Sick, if you publish the siding agreement on the sixth, um, for a public here.
I don't know if we can get it in the paper if it's on the sixth, that's the thing.
Let me give you a solution. Let me go ahead and tentatively, if y'all call reconvene meeting on the twenty-first, I will have it to the paper by the second for the twenty-first date. That way we'll hit that Tuesday, which will be the seventh, and then we'll give you to the twenty-first to be able to hold the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we have it on the twenty-first and, uh, ten? Okay, make a motion, we move our meeting to the sixth, then we reconvene on the twenty-first. And let's leave that contingent on, uh, our county attorney and county administrator getting done what we need to have done. They can cancel that twenty-first date if need be.
Have a motion and a second, everybody understands the motion, okay? The motion was that we're going to move our meeting to January the sixth, six o'clock, six P M. And, uh, reconvene on the twenty-first unless we have to alter it some way based on an attorney's findings, okay? All in, any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? There are none.
Fantastic.
Man, it's a date.
Thank you.
Well, we're much obliged to you for doing this. We went to a lot of effort to find a place was not going to be in the public eye. For one thing, it's also bringing another new business into the county. There's a substantial payout there all the way around. And it's a good time to do it after we've just had this hurricane come through here. So any kind of power we get, we'll take. But thank you very much for consideration, I'm much obliged to you.
All right, thank you, we appreciate all of you. Thank you. Okay. Next, in the way of presentations, we have our sheriff, Mr. Bill Watson, and his right-hand man, William Puckett. You may be left-handed, William, I don't know.
So we wanted to come and talk to you about the radio issues that we're having, the links between us and the state police. So for years when I worked the road, starting from eighty-nine, probably up into, let's say, the late nineties, the state police had a radio system which was on the low band called SIRS. And every car was equipped with this SIRS channel, which was a low-band channel. So your deputies and dispatch and everyone had radio communication with the state police. When the state police went to the STARS program, which was a very sophisticated radio, they put everything on the state agencies on that radio, VDOT and some of the state agencies. But they kind of left the other agencies out, like the counties and things of that nature. So there was absolutely zero communication with the state police. Now, given some of the situations that we've been in through the hurricane, uh, Smith County Sheriff's Office with, uh, the Deputy Hunter Reedy being killed there. Got her great governor at this time, Glenn Youngkin, looking at this. And he felt like what was going on was unacceptable. So Russell County is kind of a pilot project with the state police for the interoperability of the radio systems with the state police. Hopefully what will happen is our dispatch will be in communication with, with, with their dispatch for their, uh, division. The prototype for us being the project, uh, on this would be between Russell and Tazewell County troopers. So the interoperability is now being made with the state police. Their channels have been programmed in with their frequencies so that we can talk to them. We are waiting on, on a simple cable that is ordered. It goes into the server room, which connects the radio and, and makes this, and then the tweaking of that project. Now, to give you some idea of how critical this was, uh, Smith County, when, when Deputy Reedy was slain, there was a trooper that was nearby and had no clue this was going on. He could have rendered assistance, could have maybe prevented it, helped in the situation. But, you know, the troopers, they want to work, they want to help us, they want to work, but they have no communication. And we've gone as far as in the past of having older radios, portables and things, and hand it to the troopers here, uh, where we would have communication, which got done away with. So with the hurricane that happened, there was zero work between us and the state police. We had no communication. You know, everybody was going in their direction and doing what they were doing. So we basically did what we needed to do. When the governor came in and we were talking about this, he was a little bit upset over us being able not to talk to him. So he has projected this, and I do want to give him credit. He has been a blessing for every sheriff in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's a great governor. So he's very proactive, he wants a link between us, so we all work together. It is kind of crazy that we don't have radio communication with the trooper right here anymore. I mean, it's like taking a, you're not going forward, you're going backwards. And that's where we've been for the last ten years at least. So we're excited about this. We're the prototype for this project and something William Puckett here has worked on. He has the connections, he's done, uh, all the legwork, uh, with the governor and everything. And we're proud to be a part of that, so we're hoping this will help in any disaster or, uh, empty sheriff or a town officer or a game warden or anybody that needs help, you know, it's just a click of a microwave.
So this is really just the first, this is the first program like this in the state right now.
It is.
And I know the governor was.
Then maybe one other similar out on the eastern shore, but now this will be the first type of this southwest.
The governor providing funding on this?
They've, their Department of State Police has been told for all the radio equipment, all we've got to do right now is buy one cable. I don't know why they don't buy that.
Could you get Lonzo to buy that?
Can't, can't squeeze him out that tw- twenty-five dollar cable. To give Lonzo credit.
Come on, Lonzo, it's Christmas.
Trying to give him a little credit. To give, give Lonzo credit, former Sheriff Dye and Sheriff Watson. We've got the same basic radio equipment they have. And all, it's, uh, just to going in the back room and getting it all together, really.
It's another way to go forward, not backwards.
Absolutely.
And, you know, um, like I said, the governor has been wonderful. The connections we've made through, through this hurricane with Terry Cole, you know, Secretary of Public Safety. You know, all the, uh, emergency management people, uh, it's been outstanding. We've made some connections. They call us, you know, almost daily, ask how things are going, what do you need, what can we do for you? You know, and, and we're, we're wanting to grow, we're wanting a, you know, location to house all our stuff. We recently had a van donated to us that we will put, uh, as a response vehicle to something like this, with the chainsaws, the heaters, the generators, things of that nature. That way, you know, it's already loaded, it's ready to go, you jump in it and you go and you take care of it, it saves time, so. We're trying to grow this. I know it's going to be a little slow process, but we are definitely going forward.
That sounds wonderful. I heard, I heard you had the governor's personal cellphone number.
I do.
Well, he does.
I suggest you have a gold chainsaw the next time he comes down.
Secretary Cole too, so I mean, he's, he's, he's really on top of this thing too. But, but you know, it's a shame, you've got a three, three hundred million dollar radio system. You can talk from Norfolk, Virginia, a sheriff dying, I've done it before, we'd be in Norfolk and talk all the way to Grundy, but you can't talk car to car here in Russell County. You know, it's crazy.
Well, I know, uh, I know when the federal government, the FCC, did that split frequency, it caused major problems. It caused major problems on that split frequency. And they were allocating those frequencies, you know, for other, other potential things to be used for. And they were neglecting security and public safety. And, uh, so I blame the federal government on that side of it, because when they did all that, because I know when I owned the cable broadband system, we had to give up allocation of frequencies and had to switch all of our equipment out so they could use those frequencies for other things. But, uh, that really, we need to make sure that the FCC and the federal government don't, don't keep plundering into those frequencies because it could be disasters going forth. I mean, whatever we need to do as a board, write a letter to Congressman Griffin to let him know that this is not acceptable.
But I think right now, the way, the way it stands, what I was told when I talked to the Deputy Director the other day, that basically the state of Virginia has bought or acquired the remaining frequencies inside the Commonwealth to, to utilize. And that, and that's a good thing, that's a good thing.
They can open up a relay, let's say, uh, one of the troopers are here in Chesapeake and you need to get in touch with him or he's rolling his way, it could be a state police tactic team call, it could be a dive team, it could be. And they open up a relay from here in this county to that individual, maybe in Chesapeake coming this way. And then you just open up the relays and you could talk, just like we're talking right now.
Yeah, it'll all, it'll all run through the STAR system. But just, you know, you give a good example, you know, back in the early summer, late fall last year, we had some problems. We had to bring in a partial tactical field force, which is about thirty-five troopers. Well, the sheriff's sitting up here in the command place and no means to talk to these people. You know, same way this week, we got to bring in extra troopers, but no way to communicate with this people, you know.
And I, I do want to say this too, you know, I've, I've been given, you know, uh, kudos to Governor Youngkin. Give you all the same thing. Through this, you have made my job better. It makes a difference. It's great to work with you all. We're going places, we're, we're getting this done.
I think what you've done is created to Russell County and created to Russell County Sheriff's Department. And I appreciate everything you do, especially back during the hurricane, when you guys were out there with chainsaws.
It was tough, it was tough. We, we made it happen now.
All right, I think it's great.
But we, but we can't do it without y'all. I mean, there's nothing we can do.
Team effort, yeah.
Appreciate you guys doing what you're doing and appreciate the governor. We've really forged a great relationship in Russell County.
Yes.
With Governor Youngkin ever since he was running and, and I think it's paving dividends that he picked Russell County for this pilot program. And this is something that's been needed so badly. And, and I'm glad he picked Russell.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think it's going to be great. It's really going to be the next step forward, like you said, not going backwards.
And I had Andrew come over during that, I mean, he was picking up water. It was like he's working, might as well got him one of my uniforms put on, because he was, he was going out representing us and, and I mean, that's, that's what it takes, that is what it takes.
I'll do, I'll say one thing, we've seen more out of this governor here in southwest Virginia than we have out of the past ten governors before him.
Really have.
So he's down here, you never know any school show.
And you know, when Sheriff and I met him over in Abington, a few days after the storm, you've got to applaud the man for the efforts that he's put out, he really has. Now, I've never, this would be my sixth or seventh one of these things. And I've never seen, no, I mean, I'm not talking about federal disaster, I've never seen a governor act this way, never.
Thank, thank you gentlemen, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys. Okay, on to new business now. I need a motion to approve our minutes from the last board meeting, I don't have, yeah, there they are.
Yeah, I just.
November the second, twenty twenty-four.
One, uh, change that I found, um, where it says Maxie Stevens under citizens comment, it's Maxie Skeen.
Would you like to make a motion to approve impending that change?
Yes, I would.
Have a motion to approve pending the change?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Next, I have on the agenda the approval of our expenditures. If you've had an opportunity to look at those, we need a motion to approve our expenditures for this month.
Some of.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There are none. Now we have some committee appointments are coming up right here. First, I've got Cumberland Plateau Economic Development. And, uh, we've got two people, Tony Lambert and Frank Horton. And Rebecca has indicated that Tony didn't want to do this again, and she is asking another gentleman to take his place.
He hasn't replied yet, he's honey, so when he gets back, he'll let me know.
You want table him until January? The other one is up for nomination or?
Steve, I see, uh, on the Cumberland Plateau, uh, applications, um, Mr. John Beber, I'd like to nominate him for Frank Horton's place.
Any other nominations for this position?
Well, um, is there another position there? There's not any left, there's just the two.
There's just the two.
Well, there actually is.
Jim, three.
Jim, yeah, but if you want to nominate.
Okay, so I have, uh, I, I don't have anybody from District Two, and I do have an application from, uh, Mike Bryant of Castlewood.
Mike Bryant?
Yes, so I'm not going to compete with, uh, my at-large seat up there, but anyway.
Do you want to nominate him for one of those positions?
Yeah, for Jim's, the same, same, Jim Eaton's.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I will, uh, at, just go ahead and take, take, uh, Mr. Kaiser's first.
Well, I, I, what I'm getting at is I think we can, I think we can do them both, yeah.
Okay, if.
I think we can do them both if there are no other, there are no other nominations.
Okay, so I have Mike Bryant for District, representing District Two, Castlewood.
I'll entertain a motion to elect both these, fill both these positions.
For both of those?
Yes.
I'll second it, oh, thank you.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There are none. Okay, then we've got Drill Community Center, David, that's yours.
Yeah, uh, I sent Betty a, a text earlier today and didn't get a response yet back from her, but I want to go ahead and, uh, make a motion in regards to this. I think we've lost one, Haroldine Thomas has passed away. I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the rest of these. And if Betty gives me a, a person to take Haroldine's place at the next meeting, I'll put him on there, is that okay?
So your, your, your motion is to, uh, reappoint the top five, other than Mr. Thomas who passed away? Fill the other position at a later date?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There are none. Okay, now we have Heart of Appalachia, Shiloh and Mattie Gordon, to both have two-year terms.
I'll make a motion, reappoint Shiloh for her two-year, okay?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Shiloh. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Okay, now I have Mattie Gordon who's up for reappointment as well.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, nominate Mattie Gordon for that position. She runs an outfitter and she's, runs a business and she's a Russell County girl and she's from Cleveland on down, so she fits the description perfectly. I'd appreciate you all, uh, taking that into consideration, but I'll make a motion, we put her back on.
I'll say it.
I'll have two seconds. Okay, all in, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There are none. So both ladies are reappointed. Uh, now we have Alicia McGlaughlin on People Inc. Development Finance Board, and I think since she's a treasurer is the reason she's on this one, so.
I'll make that motion to leave Alicia.
Repoint her, okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Okay, now, the last one is the Upper Tennessee Roundtable, a two-year term, Mattie Gordon current, currently serves on that, so.
If she's available, she doesn't want to do it?
Mattie resigned that position, uh, some time ago, it, it, it became a, a little bit more than she thought. Maddy resigned that position, uh, some time ago. It, it, it became a, a little bit more than she thought she could handle, but, uh, I, I do have a suggestion, but I don't have an application.
What's this postponed until next month?
We can.
Table.
Table it to the next month.
I think they have, I think they have a quorum to meet in, in, but anyway.
That's my motion. Table it.
We'll just table this one until January. Okay? Okay. I don't even think we need a motion on that. We'll just table, agree to table. Okay, now we're up to citizens comment period. Finally got there. Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Kim Five. I'm from Cleveland, Virginia. I am here today to speak about the issues of my reappointment to the library board. Uh, when my reappointment was tabled in the October meeting and the email I sent Tara about how I love being on the library board and wish to stay, when unanswered, I just kind of saw the writing on the wall. And I wasn't surprised in the November meeting when it appeared I was reappointed, was not reappointed. Now, I was surprised when I got a letter November thirteenth from Mr. Lonzo Letter, uh, Lester stating that I was reappointed for a four-year term. To me, I was confused by this. I thought it had to be an error. I went to the government center. I saw the secretary. I asked her about it and why I got it. She said there was a misunderstanding at the last meeting that apparently me and Ann were supposed to be renewed and the other girl was supposed to replace, uh, someone with a vacant seat, that they just forgot to say my name. That was her understanding. She even took the paper I had that I got in the mail to Mr. Lester's office because I could see her through the window. And she confirmed that that was correct and to follow the steps, which I did. I went to the courthouse. I got sworn in. I got the paperwork. Everything was fine. And then the next day, I'm told I'm not on the board, that I was right the first time, which I find that completely wrong and disrespectful. And I also have been told that this is all being blamed on a clerical error, which indicates Twyla. I want to say that I checked with her. She checked with Lonzo. I don't want anything blamed on her. I do not feel this issue was her making. I feel that this came, you know, somewhere above her. You know, I love the library board, but everything that's happened, it's just been very disrespectful to me. And I know a lot of our Cleveland community is just a little bit upset at the moment because I don't believe we have anyone currently serving on any board or committee with the county. And I just wanted to come and speak, especially to make sure that Twyla is not held responsible for this because I was there. I have all the documents and everything. It was not her fault. I don't know what happened after I left. When I left the government center, I was told by her. She even double-checked with Lonzo. Everything was fine to follow the letter, which I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dana Tucker. Dana Tucker.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, to the distinguished members of, uh, Russell County Board of Supervisors, I stand here right now and I ask your forgiveness. Everything I knew about God, I've abandoned. I've turned my back on that faith. I've walked away from it. And it's only now that I can stand in front of you and say this. Sir, where's he at? You said the pastor up here? Oh, you're guilty. What they refer to as a phase called death by association. Ms. Wallace, you're the first person, third actually, that gave my trust before I even allowed you to gain my respect. I know if you want to know how you did it, and I'd like to tell you how, with no means of embarrassing you. When I contacted you, a man that you knew nothing about, a woman I knew nothing about. And I wept like a child for what God put on my heart. You did not beat me over with your Bible, your religion. You showed me words of comfort. And in those words of comfort, those words of comfort can only come from a woman. And I think that's why God put that in his internal instincts in women. Because it's something as men, we think we understand. We just possibly can't. We will never understand a mother's love. My heart breaks for you, what you suffered with your family. And nobody, no man on this earth, I know, can ever tell you they know how you feel. And I know that. Because what I can have you vet for me about me weeping like a child is I literally saw my mother, been on those streets of gold, as clearly as I see you now. And she gave me a book that only a mother can give their children that will show them instantly that it's gonna be all right. Would that be an accurate statement, ma'am? Not only did you gain my trust and for my respect, you have my undying loyalty, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Anything I can ever do for you. Anybody that I'm where, wherever I'm at, whether I'm allowed communications or not, you will be my top priority. And the people underneath my command, I have no association with any military or law enforcement agency within the boundaries of the United States of America. It's just the way that I talk. They will know that when your name comes up, regardless of what I've assigned them to do, they will stop immediately and come get me. And I want you to know that. And you gain that simply by showing a mother's love. I want you to know that publicly. Mr. Chairman, if I exceed your time, just tell me, just don't give me no warning. Just say time and I'll stop in mid-sentence. But I want you to know that right now, the biggest thing you've got going on is what everybody's referring to now as the two-tiered justice system in America because of our recent politics. I claim no affiliation with any politician group. And if you're born again Christian, you need to get out as well because you don't serve the same God I serve. When we look at these people and the reason I gave you the non-respect is because I was ignorant. And there's a big difference between stupid and ignorant. Stupid, you just don't know no better. I'd rather somebody call me stupid because I simply didn't know any better than to call me ignorant because I did know better. And I know, I can see it in your eyes, and I, I know you don't know where I'm going with this, but that's why I asked for a, a man of God that was here that could maybe vet this for me. I don't know you anymore than you know me. But my God tells me it ain't your bodies, your pals, or anybody else to put you in those positions. It was the true God, the only one, true God. Because he says he will put the people in authority over his people as well as his children. And whenever, the biggest lie ever told is every vote counts. You believe it if you want to. I promise you, you hold that position for one reason and one rule and only. Because in my faith now, my God put you there. That'll be between you and however you decide to live your life. And that's why I can look at you, sir, and say, I did not give you the respect that is not deserved. It doesn't matter. The fact that my God put you in that position, told me to respect people on over authority with me, that's why you deserve it. Nothing that you done, no masquerade, no, you went my way, I went your way, F you, F that. That's another thing. These guys right here are just like your teachers. They don't get the praise they deserve because they don't seek the glory. There's things they do that will put their own families in financial despair because they cannot leave somebody worse off than what they found them. And I know teachers that cannot go home to a hot meal waiting for them when their children are sneaking potatoes in because they're so embarrassed because they got nothing to take home to their family, eating to one of their buddies since I got an extra. We ain't talking high school kids. We talking third, fourth grade kids. Those are the ones you want to reach out, Ms. Die. You. I probably scared you to death first time I met you. You remember that?
Oh darling, it's gonna take more than that.
But do you remember it?
Yeah, I remember.
Okay, you remember?
But I'm, I'm not easily scared.
Okay, well, most people.
You can ask a good sheriff back there.
Most people would be because the first time I met her, it, it wasn't because I, I was trying to relate with the person that was brought in this new huddle house, okay? Right? And I think it was something like that or, or something. And, and I stopped, I said, hey, you just got elected to the board, didn't you? And I, and in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, here we go. I can't even take my bet to the vet without somebody stopping me over this masquerade thing. I don't care about your masquerade thing. If it was meant to be, I guarantee you, God had it there. If it's not, go ahead and stand against him. See how well you get, okay? Well, I wanted you to know I associated your name because of what you did for the communities. And you told me it was the Isaiah House and what you guys were gonna do. You remember that? And, and that's how you earned my respect when I didn't even know you, just because of what your name was attached to. And that is nowhere close. It's death by association.
Mr. Tucker, it's time.
Thank you, sir. Pastor, Sheriff, Mr. Eaton, with your permission, uh, they're aware of it. Your attorney, it doesn't matter. I want to try and relieve some of the burden I may have caused you. That's it. And I, and I, I would ask you, sir, I know you're in charge of this and I respect that authority, but I think you should be out here for what else anybody else has to say. Because that is true of your position. It's your call. Either way, your A and A is still standing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the end of my whiz. Everybody else out. Couple of comments closed. Then we get on to business. Let's see. Constitutional officers reports. I don't see any of them here. Okay, county attorney. It's up to you, Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, brief report tonight. Uh, we did execute the Isaiah House, uh, Isaiah one seventeen house agreement, um, for the individual grant from, from the opioid abatement authority. And I believe they held their, uh, opening this past week. And so that completes the work on that, other than general grant maintenance and monitoring, but that project is now complete, so that makes both C Corps and Isaiah House, uh, executed agreements, and those are operating in the county, as far as I know. Um, second item on my update is an update on deciding agreement, which we've discussed, and you've already taken action on, so that's, I don't think necessary to discuss any further. However, you still have a draft solar ordinance that is, um, it's been drafted. It's been presented to the board in an attorney report. Um, you all have not taken any further action regarding that. However, I would recommend that since we're going to continue to have solar development project proposals in the county, you need a standard set of rules for every solar applicant to go by. That draft did not include a presentation, a mandatory presentation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed project. But I think, uh, if you do take action on that, we should add that in, um, as a way to ensure that the public is aware of what solar projects are being proposed and the board is all equally aware of what's being proposed. Then you guys will have the same opportunity to engage with any future solar developer. And then that would conclude my report with the exception of, uh, we've gotten a couple of FOA requests in the last month, which Lonzo has taken up and fulfilled. I think that's it. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lester, it's up to you.
Thank you, Chairman. On the cap, first thing on the county administrator reports and requests is, of course, the Russell County Road Reporting System. As everybody had seen the reports in their respective, uh, districts, uh, take a look over those. That's what we'll be reporting to VDOT. Second thing on the county administrator reports is the monthly, VDOT monthly road reporting. VDOT's asking for two points of action on this one. That is Route eight oh six abandonment and the, uh, abandonment of the two-foot bridges. That will be in my request for, uh, later on. Next is, oh, I'm sorry. Next on the county administrator reports is, uh, the VAOC plenary legislative program in the southwest Virginia legislative reception, which is on January the twenty-ninth. Just as a reminder, make sure the board, if you're going to go and attend, let me know, uh, or Rhonda, and both, us both know. And that way we can make appropriate arrangements. Of course, I've also put the, what the VAOC has considered for the legislation on what the state of Virginia is looking at as far as this, uh, legislative session. Take a look over it and whatever that, uh, you get, as the board decides that is an issue within Russell County, please let us know. Of course, next is the Russell County FEMA, emergency public assistance and individual assisted declaration. This is just an update that, um, actually our numbers went up since this report. I must, as of this morning, I'm up to seven hundred and seventy-five individual, uh, reporting for FEMA assistance on the individual assistance for families, plus what y'all heard that the board has participated, uh, with DSS and was able to provide that assistance, plus also the assistance that we gave to the four, um, food pantries to be able to help over, uh, fifteen, seventeen hundred additional families, especially during the Thanksgiving and Christmas, so.
Lonzo, how much were the food pantries to get? Do you, was, was it twenty thousand each one off?
Twenty-five thousand each one.
Twenty-five thousand for each one off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-five thousand. Uh, each one of them got twenty-five thousand and they were, uh, all, uh, shown their, you know, their sincerity, their appreciation. And we've got many letters of comments that, um, you know, from individual families during this time too. So with us being able to tag team between what the Department of Social Services have done, what the food pantries have done, and what we have been to done with the individual assistance, uh, you know, I, I hope if there is anyone out there listening, if you got left out, please let us know. So, uh, we hope we, during that time, we had, you know, a, uh, over, uh, seven thousand, I think it was seven thousand requests coming in just from Russell County alone.
I think it might be a good time to mention Wellspring.
Yeah, uh, that, I promised Wellspring, which gave us, uh, and that is into the Youngkins part. Next on my reports is when Governor Youngkin shared, of course, uh, we were in the same meeting with the sheriff's department. They did, uh, they mentioned the, of course, the communication issues that were, came up during the FEMA issues between the different agencies. And, um, and again, congratulations to Russell County being chosen as the pilot program for the STAR program. That is a big one. And, uh, we had all the other counties in there, so the governor kind of, he was kind of hush, hush on it because Washington County is kind of pouting at us because we ended up with it. So that's just a tease on their part, but as all the rescues will gain benefit from this, what comes in this pilot program, and I'll just echo what, uh, Sheriff Watson had said, what comes out of this private, pri- uh, pilot program for the STAR program for Russell County will be implemented statewide. This is just the pilot to test to be able to get everybody operational. So, of course, we talked to the governor about that. We talked to the governor about what we did and what everyone did, what everyone contributed with. And, uh, they were very sincere about it. They were, they didn't know what to think about our number of shelters and what we're doing to plan on, on action plans for future events. Especially we have the winter coming around the area. We, you know, we're in the process of getting generators for the fire departments and the, uh, community centers. I've already started installing ice machines in, in various ones as we're getting in, so we're prepping up these. At one point in time, we will have over seventeen available shelters, not including the FEMA shelters, available in case we have an incident, another one. It was good lessons learned. What we learned during the event was this is the first time Russell County being shut down completely. Usually we could, if one part went down, we can move them or transfer them to the other part of the county and we'd have availability or be able to service them. This time, everyone got covered with the amount of trees. Everyone was isolated. And the governor kind of mentioned that and he said, wow, and they were impressed with that and they were looking at maybe suggesting this to other communities too. Because when these trees go down, people that's in Holacre or, or in Cleveland or in Dane or Castlewood, they can't get out and travel. You've got to have, it's got to be in place at those locations. So that's why we're implementing these all over the county. He was very sincere. Of course, you know, he's, he's big on Russell County. Uh, uh, Russell County was one of the first counties to endorse him as governor. He hasn't forgot that. And again, not to throw the, uh, sheriff under the bus. He gave me his private cell phone number, so that's between him and Sheriff Watson. He probably will ask you for a lot, but, uh, in summary, is that not, or was Russell County chosen for that program? It was chosen for that program because we, we all, all handled ourselves during this event. Russell County was sitting there and what the other counties were sitting, listening to us, and they were taking note of what we were doing and how fast we did it. So kudos to every sheriff, emergency management, emergency services, fire, rescue, volunteers. Thank you.
That mansion of ice machines, where are you going to put those?
Right now, we're putting them, availability in community centers and fire departments. We're doing both. Some of them already have them, some of them don't. So we've been checking around. And Ms. Wallace is giving me the look, so I know what that means. We are checking all the community centers out, yes. So to proceed on, county administrator request is now into economic development. Okay, the Russell County IDA, this is on the Siemens Equipment. This is for the Tobacco Regional Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement and Revenue Sharing Agreement and Loan Agreement. So it's half loan and half grant. That's the procedures now of a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So I need approval on the Siemens Equipment Tobacco Regional Fund Performance Agreement and Revenue Sharing Agreement and Loan Agreement. So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, son? There are none.
And in this agreement, just, just one more thing, that the number of employees that comes with this loan agreement and with this sharing agreement is, of course, seventy-five more jobs in Russell County, which is excellent, yes. Next on the county administrator request is the annual Virginia Department of Health Services Agreement that, for the Department of Health, I need approval on, on the service agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this agreement with the Health Department. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Likes, son? There are none.
Next on the county administrator request is the VDOT Resolution that you'll see on Route eight sixty-seven. This is a rule addition. As you can see, that we're moving forward on the Glade Hollow project. I need approval for the motion. There is a platting here for what, what is being proposed under this project. And this, like I said, this is an addition to the secondary system of Glade Hollow. I need approval on this resolution to move forward as a project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Have a motion and a second.
I was looking at the plat, is that green? Are they going to buy and move that road on around that curve? Is that what, what the addition is going to be?
Around to the red. See, it's already, it's already state main.
Yeah, at the top of the hill.
Top of the hill, that is correct. So they're going, they, actually, myself and Mr. Hensley met with VDOT last week in the Coal Road Committee, and I think, reminding Mr. Hensley, there was one piece of property that needed an easement down there that they thought they could.
Yeah, they, they were still going to work out that easement, but once that's done, they're planning on paving that, I guess, next summer.
Yep, yep. So I need approval on that resolution. Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
Any further comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Likes, son? There are none.
Next, again, is the VDOT Resolution. This is the Route eight oh six Route Abandonment Resolution that VDOT no longer maintains. They're asking to remove it from their system, secondary system of state highways. I need a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Likes, son? There are none.
Next on the county administrator request is, of course, the VDOT Resolution. This had come up before the boards before. I think Mr. Eaton had brought it up. When we, we got, we had three foot bridges that were in the inventory, but VDOT is recommending on Foot Bridge nine thousand, which is the Route six forty Purdue Stream Bridge, and their Foot Bridge nine thousand two off Route seven twenty-three be abandoned. We talked about that during the coal meeting, too. Right now, they, all the residents have alternative routes. It's got to where there are too much deteriorated, too much expensive to maintain, so they're asking for abandonment on those, too.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the abandonment of these three foot bridges.
Two foot, two foot.
Two, two.
Yes. Before discussion, I fought this battle once before, because we talk about tourism, and everybody's about tourism. So let's be honest with ourselves. These are historic bridges that has, that could be developed into walking trails or something like that. So if we give up these options, they're going to, these, these bridges will go away, and they could be scenic, historic bridges in our community. And I'm not going to support it for the fact that it's not that expensive for them to keep these up. They're just, they just don't want to, I mean, they've got enough money in the state budget to, to take care of two bridges here. And these bridges, if they go away, they're, you'll never build them back. I'll tell you that.
My understanding, it's like everything else, it's liability. If a kid gets hurt on that bridge, it falls back on the state.
Well, what, what I agree with you, Andrew, but we're building bridges. The state's giving grants to build new bridges, new walkways, and they're not wanting to fix the ones that they got, but we're building new ones. We're building new walkways. We're building new bridges.
That's, is that, is that the state or is that towns and private?
To me, it's no different, especially because the allocations of funding that do these things are the taxpayers' dollars. So we're eliminating two, and we're going to continue to build others. These towns are going to have a hard time and struggle for maintenance on these things financially. Somebody's going to have to pick up a tab on it eventually down the road.
If they've done anything to it, have they changed? I know if you change a building, it loses its historical thing. Have they done anything to, to these bridges that make them lose their historical factor?
They actually fixed them up.
Yeah.
They actually put some money in it. When I fought that fight, they went down there. All they done is blocked them off so people couldn't cross them, but they did a lot of work to them. They put new boarding in them. They fixed them up, and I think there's going to, you know, we could utilize these on trails and other things like that if, if we would just be a little bit more open-minded, not want to shut them down and tear them down, but.
And see, that was one of the things that we asked in that meeting, too, about the historical, but it's also, you know, in the letter. Here's what, on paragraph two, it says, "Due to the VDOT, due to the way VDOT is required to maintain the foot bridges, they are generally not eligible for historic register. Oftentimes, public opposition to abandonment of foot bridges is based on the public's perception of the foot bridges as having historic or nostalgic value. However, VDOT is required to upgrade the foot bridges to current approved materials and specifications every time the foot bridge is maintained or reconstructed, thus negating any eligibility for the register to be official historical sites." So it's, it is, it's, there are, I think, there's only one left in Washington County that was talking about. But, you know, foot bridges are almost like our canneries. We only got seven in the state left, and.
What, what happens? Do they revert back to property? Who actually owns the thing? Back to the property owners? So if the property line is in the middle of the creek, you own half a bridge?
Well, my concern is that it puts the onus of the responsibility and liability back on the property owner at this point, which is a big problem.
And then you could still have people trying to use it, and then they have the liability.
And you've got a rickety old bridge, and somebody falls through it, and they're going to get sued.
And that's, that's not right either.
I just think that the historic, tourism group needs to look at another alternative measure, a way that we could utilize these walking bridges. I mean, they're beautiful, and I know that, that's one of the things I want to bring up when we're in Richmond. It's kind of like cutting your nose off to spite your face. You, you want to build bridges and walkways and with, you know, in other communities, but then you want to take away these, which, you know, I just don't see it. I, I think there's a way to sit down and have a conversation with them and see how we could utilize these walking bridges for trails or whatever.
I agree.
I'm not as nostalgic as Mr. Eaton. I'd assume tear them down as anything, but I'm not going to tear them down with Russell County taxpayer money. So here's the deal. If VDOT, well, not according to this, this is an abandonment. So if we abandon it, we'll put it back on land, and we're not going to do that. So if VDOT wants to take them down, so be it, but not going to, not going to do that.
Are, are these located in areas where there is potential for a trail or a?
Two of them's in my district.
Yeah. Or they located where?
Here's the map of where they're located. Yep.
So you could actually develop a trail off these?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's potential for anything if, you know, like you said.
I just don't think a lot of people's looking at every option to say there's, you know, VDOT.
VDOT's not wanting to.
Maintain them. That's it.
They're just not wanting to maintain them. And there might be other options here, and I know there's liabilities or, I want to tell you something. Cleveland's got one of the prettiest walkways and bridges that you'd ever go across. We went across it many times. There's going to have, be some support there for maintenance and keeping it up and doing that, but there's no difference than that, than these. We need to support these areas and be able to maintain the maintenance side of these bridges, too, so people can use them.
So I have a question. May I, Mr. Chair? So, Mr. Lester, remind me, there's several properties in District Two that we have utilized because they've been abandoned. Now, wait a minute. It's not been discontinued. Help me with my terminology. All right, so if this is abandoned but not discontinued, the easement still exists?
The easement, if it's abandoned, the easement still exists.
So we can accept the abandonment and retain the easement? How did we, we use that?
Well, the foot bridges is a little different than the route.
Okay.
Because you're, because you're asking.
I was using.
If I'm a property owner and I've got a foot bridge that were previously, historically, everybody walked back and forth for a community, if it's on my property now and you abandoned it from VDOT, I want to go out there and put, no property, do not trespass.
So just for public clarification, we had a bridge in Old Castlewood that was a road bridge. And it was discontinued, but it was never abandoned.
That's right. It was discontinued.
It was abandoned and never discontinued. I don't, sorry, I don't have my, my exact verbiage here. I need a VDOT person. So we were able to use that easement to do a canoe launch, but you're telling me that this is private, private property to private property, so you cannot use this same thing, and you get rid of the bridge, but you keep the easement in case Mr. Eaton and Ms. Di comes up with some grant money to rebuild them one. Because it's basically what they are, is you're going to have to rebuild the thing from scratch anyway, but you're just retaining that opportunity to do so. So was that a road? If it's VDOT, shouldn't that be the same, same way? Shouldn't it work the same way?
Well, we even brought it up in the coast meeting, and that was one of our concern. First, our concern was, and Andrew would tell you, Mr. Hensley, that property owners have access. That nobody was getting cut off, that, you know, it's a VDOT bridge. You've got to remember, VDOT owns these. I mean, it's, it's theirs. So they, they told us no one would get cut off, so.
There's, there's one bridge that they said could never be abandoned.
And that's, that's the bridge that's listed as nine thousand, I think, and then one will never be abandoned.
Mr. Lester, can we carry this over?
Table.
Our coal road meeting is, what is it, the sixteenth? I can't remember. But anyways, we have a coal road meeting in January. We can discuss it with them at that meeting and invite them, I guess, would be to the February meeting, to discuss this with the whole board. That way, everybody can get clarification on any questions they have with VDOT.
In order to do that, Andrew, you'd have to, you'd have to withdraw your motion in a second.
I'll withdraw my motion if we can do that.
And I'll agree to withdraw my second.
Okay. So the motion's off the table now?
Let me, let me say one more thing, too, because this has been a huge concern of mine. I was all in favor of the State Park, Clinch River State Park, and I still am. But there is some things that you got to dig in deep, because, you know, every good thing usually has something bad to tag along with it. But one of the things I ran into when Senator Ben Chafin was alive, and he was an advocate of the Virginia Clinch River State Park, and I kind of, it hit me one day. I said, well, what about all these people that have baptisms at these, on the river? You know, once a state has something, then you have that issue between you're being state and with the religious group. And what I found was, I started getting a lot of calls from churches that said there were huge no trespassing signs up over at Blackford and places, and they were afraid that they were going to go to jail if they violated that and had a baptismal service. So, you know, whenever we do things, I, I think we need to really, and I appreciate you, Andrew, for putting this off to see if we might be able to look at some other alternative things. But I think there's an opportunity here for us to, to look at this, since these bridges do accompany the Clinch River State Park. And there should be some benefit there.
I think VDOT would love to give those to the state park.
And I'd say they'd love it, and we might need to look into it to see if we could get that accommodated. Well, let me make another suggestion. Like Mr. Hensley says, well, Mr. Eaton intends to, so that coal road meeting. How's that? See, it's, or, and, and, well, I can't. So you choose between you and Tara, because I got, I got two bridges here in two different districts, but Andrew has to be there by law, so. I think me and Tara's on the same wavelength here. We, we want our districts, and we want to support our districts with our existing infrastructure. We've talked about it on a consistent basis, about whenever they get a grant to build whatever they did in Cleveland, we got to support that long-term. It ain't one of these short things that you all of a sudden, you know, say, well, you know, and something could happen that we need to, to help fix these things. So these other bridges would be an accommodation to some of the other efforts that we're doing in tourism. You know, it's just, it could be that big, and if we do away with it, we might look, look back and say, oh, my gosh, I wish I hadn't not have done that if I didn't do my due diligence and my research. And when you have churches that call you with a concern that they're going to get arrested because they're having a baptismal service, that's very concerning, and nobody actually looked at that coming down the pike. And we, we kind of headed it off, but I've had to make numerous phone calls on that. So we just need to make sure that the state is on board, and I don't want to give them anything if we don't have to. So we'll add this to it. Mr. Hensley knows that we've got a list that we're already approaching and discussing with VDOT. We'll add this to it. So, Mr. Eaton, Ms. Di, want you to attend?
Either one of us.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item. We beat this one to death.
Well, this next one is the twenty twenty-four general election for the President and Vice President, U.S. Senate, House, Representative Towns, and Constitutional Amendment. Y'all have looked over the list. I need approval for.
So moved. So gladly moved. Amen.
So have a motion and a second. No discussion. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Ten thousand times, yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Next time, next item on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Litter Grant, as y'all have seen in your packet, fifteen thousand five fourteen to Russell County, Cleveland, eighteen thirty-eight, Holacre, eighteen thirty-eight, and the town eleven is thirty-two forty. I need approval for twenty-two thousand four thirty for environmental quality.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. If not, all in favor of this, accepting this grant, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? There are none.
Okay. The day before Thanksgiving, we had an inspection on the animal shelter, so on the eleven twenty-five. So as, as far as the inspection report that you can see in the packet, to give the summary is, our protocols and services that we've been given are transports and our adoption programs. As, as Dr. Meister is the county veterinarian, and we have a great staff as far as the animal control officers. They've done a great job, and they've got it. There's one but there, and, and one but is in the report. The animal shelter is old. It is so old. It's one of the oldest facilities that we've got here. So we have, we have patched, we have painted. I'm spending more maintaining over years and years. And it is, and what y'all've got, the public has to understand is that I can't go in and just paint.
And it is, and what y'all got, the public has to understand is that I can't go in and just paint with regular paint with animals. And, you know, it has to be able to deter ammonia, and we have to call in Sharon Williams, and it can't have odors, and it can't have toxics in it, so. And that is state and federal code, so they watch these guidelines very closely. But as far as our programs and our adopt programs and the rest, and these programs are working well, but to put it on to the board's acceptance of the report that's here. But the shelter is gonna have to be a project that has to be considered by the board.
We purchase property for that, and we just need to get ahead along with the program, you know, while, while we have the opportunity, so.
I got a way to pay for it.
What, what we gonna sell?
Dog washers.
My dog washing machines.
Oh, yeah, I've got that.
If you don't do it, then David gonna buy one.
Hey, those, those are no joke, it's an inside joke. They have them in Charlottesville, believe it or not, they have dog washing machines in Charlottesville that makes money, they do. Yes, but it's another, it's another.
Seriously, we need to, we need to get on with this before we get a violation. I mean, we've been talking about this eight years now, this is ninth year we're going into it. It should have already been done, there was always something to hold it up, so.
Well, what do we need, Mr. Lester, to get this project started?
Well, right now, we.
We tried to, I think we voted here to sell some land, did you already spend that money or?
No, you did. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. No, seriously, uh, we already bought the property, it is already been purchased, the utilities are in the process of relocating in the sewers. Food City and Pa- and Pals, they, it takes a wa- uh, they've removed the wiring and the rest, they got ready to flip the switch and flip one on and flip the other one off. But we're based off of what the preliminary or conceptual plans is, it looks like a prefab slab, you know, metal building. And of course, it's gonna be, you know, it has to house dogs, so it, it'll, um, we could proceed with it, but as far as the land and electricity and the water and sewers there. We'll have to go through the town eleven to start the permitting process for the hook up to the water and sewer, but everything's in place.
Our community workforce can do a lot of the interior work, right?
And our PSA.
And the county staff.
Well, I think, I think we need to, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we put it out for bid on the construction.
Is it going to just be dogs, or will it do dogs and cats?
Well, that's a very good question.
I mean, there's, you know, we've kinda been just doing dogs, so what's the process to include?
Well, the code of Virginia says this, and this is what the code says, we currently, right now, we're exempt. From cats, cause we do not have a facility that can house cats, so, but if you build a new, you have to house cats.
I think, I think we have to.
Yes, yeah, you have to, that's a law.
We told people along the way that when the new one was built, there would be quote unquote a cat house there. That was a joke.
I can see that's in the paper now.
For actual cats. I can see the headlines now. Make it three weeks in a row, yeah.
Point is, electric, electricity's there, I can go, uh, one other thing, these facilities that has to be approved by the VDAC. The Department of Agricultural Services, that has to be looked at to make sure that we're in compliance with, you know, the veterinarian services and, and the vet has to approve it, so. I'll be glad to move forward with it, like I said, we've got conceptual plans, we've looked at this many times, and then we'll pull it back and push it back on the shelf, cause we didn't have the funding, then I'll pull it back and push it back. So we'll bring it up to date and, uh, I'll present that to the board.
Can we talk to the town about helping with the funding on this project, cause it is a major, a major, um, population center in our county, and it is in our town limits.
I can do that.
Get them to give a letter of support.
Or we can do a per dog fee inside the town limit.
Uh, they very approached that. A dog fee.
Hey, we've, we've lost control here, let's, let's get off the meeting.
Did, did, did you make a motion, Mr. Eaton, or?
We, I think, I think you need.
I was gonna get Lonzo authorization to go ahead and move forward on the project.
I think we need to move forward.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have to do it, if not, we're gonna get violated.
We're gonna get a violation, big time violation.
I remember when Lou and Steven, as we first got elected, hey, when we first walked in, the biggest issue we had was that animal shelter. I mean, it was awful, and it was awful.
Well.
We, we all committed then, hey, let's, let's, we ended up, and Rebecca, we all worked to get the land and do some water trade, so we're gonna have to do something.
Well, do we need a motion?
I don't, I don't think we just, we just need to instruct Lonzo to move forward with it, bring it back to the board with perhaps conceptual.
Plans.
Plans and, and a cost.
And a cost, and a, and a cost.
Well, now that y'all mentioned cost, just as quick, so, and I'll finish it up, tell you how detrimental this is. Uh, we were proceeding, like I said, we pulling off, before the pandemic, everything went, they just stood down, we were already at critical mass as far as this facility. That meant VDAC was ready to fine us. Now, those fines are ten thousand dollars a day.
We don't wanna get in that situation.
You, you, you don't want that because of the, not just the cost to the county, the liability to the county. It, you're just throwing good money after bad, because we have painted this, we, I've had community workers, they've worked down there, you, it don't cost you anything to maintain, the sheriff office knows. I mean, it's, it's worked on a dime, but the facility is just too old. There's nothing else we can do with it, so.
You, you have your marching orders in, Mr. List.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, um, I know that, uh, when we started our excellent adventure in two thousand sixteen with everybody standing in here with all their posters as Mr. Eaton was referring to, that was a terrible time. But, um, the veterinarian clinic out there was going to be the biggest partner that we had, and they were gonna take care of things. Is that still on the table where the property is?
Yes, it's, it's adjacent to the prop- yes, yeah.
And so the veterinarian clinic is still, um, Dr. Meister is still our county vet?
Veterinarian, yes, ma'am.
Our county vet, and it's saving a tremendous amount of money anyway. Okay, I'm just clarifying that, thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Meister volunteers a lot of her time for donations and, and, and free. What, what a lot of counties do, they don't understand, you're required by code to have veterinarian, number one. That means she works part-time, she just comes in and out and half time, she don't charge, oh, gee, listen. Um, second thing is, she, you will hire a full-time and have it in place by code in seventy-two hours, that's how, that's what the code stipulates. These animals have a lot of clout as far as politically, as legislatively, so. Again, V, VDAC has worked with us, cause we know we bought the property, VDAC has worked with us, cause they know we have renovated this thing and wiped this thing and cleaned this thing for good God, ten years. So now, and it's, they say that we, we're, we will not make it the next time. But I will continue with the plans and I'll present that to the board. Next is the Russell County Employee Early Payroll, of course, this is the holidays, this is an annual, uh, uh, tradition. And additional holiday dates and, and the part-time pay, this is the annual, so.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
Have a motion to approve the early payment, need a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same eye. Any opposed, like sign, there aren't none.
Thanks to all of our employees, thank you.
Yes.
And next on the line item that we added, of course, this is the VDOT Project Administration Agreement and Resolution. This is the final resolution agreement by VDOT for the grant for the Pure Salmon Project, that's, that we added to the agenda, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same eye. Any opposed, like sign, there aren't none.
Sir, that concludes the County Ministry of Reports and Requests.
Okay, comments from the board or any discussion? Nate, start with you.
Merry Christmas, everyone, enjoy your holiday.
Rebecca?
Uh, just, just a couple of things, Lonzo, is VDOT getting these road requests that people put in on our website? To clear the brush and cut the trees and guard rail, is VDOT getting those?
The ones that's applicable to the state roads, now, if I'm getting ones for private roads, I can. Well, at first, we were seeing them in the private roads, but that's, I can't do that, so. But if you have one that you need checked on or rechecked on, let us know, and Twila will be glad to do that for you.
Have the generators been ordered from, uh, the Wells Springs money?
There were generators, we have been going around to all the facilities evaluating each facility.
Well, winter is coming, storms are coming, let's get ahead of this, you said you have the money, get them ordered, get them out there, people in the county. I'm bossing you around this evening, I'm bossing. Yeah.
Yeah, they.
Get them big ones, that's all I'm gonna say, what they need. That's right, go over, go over, make sure they have them.
We can do that, and what, actually, one of the greatest helps was, you know, we were looking at multiple contractors, and, uh, Mr. Kaiser, he had a suggestion, cause, you know, and that's his li- you know. We, we looked at the big retailers, you know, like Lowe's, they can, they can handle the big things, cause right now contractors are bombarded with generators and fixing their current generators, so. We're going out, we've got the list, look at the facilities, what the scope is, what each one of them needs, cause I've run into the one down in Cleveland. Uh, each one's different sizes, different ones between that, and then like the size on drill won't fit, you know, it's too big, you know, too small. Well, but anyhow, I'll get it done, we'll get it spent.
Yeah, because it, it is, the weather is, we are gonna start having ice, we are gonna start having snow, and we don't need our folks without.
Well, as a just good backup, just give everybody reassurance, and I'm gonna throw Bill along there, he's got a whole building full of generators, big one sitting over there. If I, I need a building, I can lock up right now, how many you got, sixteen? Is it sixteen? It's fifteen, I got high fifteen I generators at the back, he won't let me have them though, but. No one will go without, but.
That's all, and I'll echo what Nate said, Merry Christmas, and I hope everyone has a good holiday.
Merry Christmas, and please remember, uh, Jesus is the reason for the season, so, you know, just, uh, we're blessed, we're blessed as a county. I know sometimes we don't get the recognition we need, there's a lot of good things that's going on in our county and God's blessing. Uh, there's a lot of divine intervention and a lot of things happening, and some announcements that's gonna be made here shortly, uh, and I'm just excited about what he's doing. And he's doing it, uh, for us as a county.
Yeah, I wanna echo that too, Merry Christmas, um, I hope everybody has a wonderful, wonderful holiday with their family. I, I did have something I wanted to bring up before the board. Um, I'd like to make a motion for Lonzo to do a monthly publication for us, just to put out there what we've done, what we plan to do, board considerations. Um, legislation that's come up, economic development, community projects, add whatever you want to to that, Lonzo, as far as, you know. Because I think that would help with transparency, people see what's coming, people see what has been done, um, you can look back and see how things have been handled, et cetera.
He is, he's, I'll, I'll just, just for your information there, he's already agreed to do that.
Okay.
But, but now he and Shiloh are working on a year-end report.
Well, that was what, I was gonna.
That will summarize everything.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that, because honestly, we've had a lot that's went on this year, and a lot of it good.
Yeah.
That has been overshadowed, I think, um, and I would really like for that to be put out, um, you know, the year end now and then.
Month.
Yep.
So.
Done.
So I guess we don't even need a motion, sounds good, thanks.
Okay.
Absolutely, good one.
Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, first of all, I'm gonna say thank you to the sheriff and to Mr. Packet for such an outstanding job and for taking us forward. And we're with you, I think that's a great thing, I appreciate you so very much, we don't say that a lot to each other, but I do, I really, really do. And I'm sure this board does, I'm speaking on behalf of all of us, not just Lou. Um, also, moving on to District Two, uh, during, uh, Helene, the trees came down bad, and I know we're talking about getting recovery and FEMA at dollars and everything. But don't forget the little Artie Lee campground, I got two massive trees, uh, over there that's hanging over onto one of the spots, I don't know who's gonna get those. Is FEMA gonna pay you to take them down, Lonzo, and fix them? I hope, I'm putting you on the spot, but anyway.
No, it's, 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 it's on us.
I'm sorry, you should have put that down, but anyway.
It's already on the community work list.
Those are massive, I don't know if you can do that or not, but I'll leave that to you all, to the experts. Also, the poinsettias that are here tonight, I'm very thankful to the Russell County Career and Technology Center for furnishing those beautiful things. You can pick those up if they haven't sold out already, I'm doing a marketing campaign for them, and by the way, Merry Christmas and have a blessed New Year, thank you, board.
Andrew? First off, we'll say Merry Christmas, as everybody else has said, and we'll be back in the New Year, and hopefully next year, we can bring a whole lot of good to our county, uh, and see some good things happen, and, and God will continue to bless us. I think we've been blessed tremendously already, uh, more than we deserve, definitely. Um, it's been mentioned that, uh, we had the coal road meeting and, uh.
No, that's where I did it.
I'll go back to that just a little bit, that, uh, there's gonna be brought to the board in January, I, it's five or six roads, Mr. Lester can nail that down for us, but, uh. That's gonna be brought up for safety issues, repaving, um, widening out, just different things, so, uh, pay attention to the agenda next month, your road might be on there. And, uh, we're gonna have another meeting, uh, middle, end of January, and, uh, discuss some other issues that was brought up by some of the members. So, uh, there could be roads added to that, and, uh, that's coal severance money, so I've, I've learned a whole lot. We get severance money not just from coal, but we get severance money from natural gas, and, uh, we get severance money from all of our rock quarries, so. Everybody knows we got a rock quarry from Castlewood to Sword Creek and everywhere in between, so those, those rock quarries are getting us some, uh, fresh asphalt. So, uh, when you see the gravel truck, wave at him, but, uh, y'all have a good night, and I appreciate you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
No, I think first.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot about your five-page, your five-page speech.
My favorite five-page speech, I'll just say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and do remember the reason for the season. It's easy to get caught up in all the hubbub and, and all the gifts and the presents, especially when you have grandchildren, that's all I've done is shopped online for the last week, I guess, but, uh. Uh, I appreciate the entire board, uh, the way we've worked together this year and look forward, you know, to another coming year. We're gonna have some major issues in front of us with the reassessment and, and issues like that coming up, and, uh. I do wanna have a, I've got a project that I'm gonna talk, discuss with the board, but it'll have to be, it's, it's a pri- uh, it's a one that we have to keep secret on it. So we'll have to do an executive session, hopefully right after the first of the year, I'd like to be able to do that, so. Uh, but it's a good project, and I think it's one that you'll be interested in, it'd be, if it all works out, it'll be a game changer, but, uh, other than that, uh. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and go ahead and make your motion to adjourn, David.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?